Good evening. The fifth meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Our members of the council, due to us being in a virtual meeting, please note that I will recognize you by saying you have the floor. Once I recognize you, please state your name and then begin to speak. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Maxine Reed Vance of Grace Baptist Church. Reverend Reed Vance, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Can we maintain a posture of prayer, please, as we go into this invocation? All hearts and minds. Our Father, the giver of all good and perfect gifts, we come before you this evening asking that you would invade our space, asking that you would take up residence in each heart assembled. You are welcome in these broken vessels. We rejoice in this day, a day that we have not seen before and will not see again. So let us, let the wisdom from on high flood our minds. Let our tongues speak in righteousness. God, the decisions that we will make here tonight, at the forefront of all of the deliberations, we lift up the least of our brothers and sisters. We ask that you would heal the sick, your hope to the hopeless, become help to the helpless, comfort our grieving, save our lost. Let us be beacons of light in the darkness of a life. As the city leaders gather, give them individually what they need and allow them to use what has been given them to uplift. Bless this mayor and this city council and the constituents they serve, not by might, Lord, but by your Spirit. We are careful to give you the glory for the things that you have done and will do. In the masculine name of Yahshua, our Lord and Savior, we say amen and amen.
Amen. Now, we will have a pledge of allegiance. Please turn to a flag or anything you would like to acknowledge to participate in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For our showcase tonight for Baltimore, we are joined by Sid Wilson. He's from the South Baltimore Learning Center. Mr. Wilson, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. I am, as you mentioned, Sidney Wilson. I am the executive director for SBLC Learning Works, also known as South Baltimore Learning Center. Thank you to Councilman Eric Costello for the opportunity. I'm excited to be here. I've joined SBLC just six months ago as the executive director and very proud to come in and continue the legacy of 30 years of serving Baltimore residents, starting in South Baltimore, but now, as you all know, we serve beyond South Baltimore and we are servicing residents throughout the city. Wanted to make you guys aware that, just like any other school, the pandemic has affected us drastically and the team that at SBLC has come together and we've transitioned to online learning. We still have a long way to go. We have many of our learners, as you know, already come to us with a deficit. So either they are not able to comprehend how to get on Zoom to go to class, either they don't have a device, or they don't have access to the Internet. I'm a proud member of the Baltimore Digital Equity Coalition. So I am staying close to all the resources that are made available and taking advantage of those resources to try to help our learners, students, we call them learners. So I wanted to make sure that SBLC is on the radar of the council as an organization that is critical and on the front lines of supporting residents of Baltimore. And we are aggressively seeking funding to help provide additional technology equipment for our learners so we can continue to fulfill our mission. So I'm not quite sure how long I have. I want to stop there if there's any questions people may have for me. But again, thank you for this opportunity. I did get a chance to cross paths with Mayor Scott. He's very aware of who we are and what we do. And I look forward to a future opportunity to spend some time with him and other members of the council. So again, thank you so much for the opportunity to raise awareness about SBLC Learning Works and our mission.
Well, Mr. Executive Director, thanks for dropping by and letting us know who you are and the mission of your organization. And thank you to Council Chairman Costello for introducing us to you. And we look forward to hearing more from you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much. So again, for the other members, you know, there will be opportunities before every council meeting to showcase and highlight organizations and individuals in your district doing great work. Please make sure that you connect with Nikki, or Matt, or Brittany, or my staff, and they will put you on the schedule. Next up, to the clerk, if you could, please call the role of members.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a forum.
We will now proceed to the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the February 8th, 2021 proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Our communications from the mayor can be found on the agenda. Now we'll move into bills being introduced. You will now hear our first bill. Madam Clerk, if you could, with 21-40.
City Council Bill 21-0040, Flood Plane Management Code Provision. For the purpose of modifying the city laws governing flood plane management to meet or exceed requirements for eligibility in the National Flood Insurance Program and other requirements of federal and state law, incorporating certain flood-resistant design and construction standards adopted by the American Society of Civil Engineers, defining and redefining certain terms, repealing redundant, obsolete, or otherwise superfluous provisions, correcting and conforming certain obsolete nomenclature, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the protection, maintenance, and enhancement of the public health, safety, and welfare through flood plane management. Sponsored the President on behalf of the Administration.
Well, this bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 21-0041, Board of Estimates, Basic Organization and Procurement Thresholds. For the purpose of repealing City Code Article 5, Subtitle 1, City Controller, Designating the Controller or Comptroller's Designee to be the clerk of the Board of Estimates, Requiring the clerk of the Board of Estimates, Coordinate reports required to be filed with the Board of Estimates, Requiring the Comptroller to retain the reports for an appropriate period of time, and establishing certain contract and procurement thresholds pursuant to City Charter Code 6, Section 11B. Sponsored the President on behalf of the Comptroller.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee.
City Council Bill 21-0042, Real Estate Records Modernization. For the purpose of modernizing the methods by which the Comptroller shall make certain information regarding the city's real estate records available to the public, making certain stylistic changes in conforming and correcting related provisions. Sponsored the President on behalf of the Comptroller.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee.
City Council Bill 21-0043, Committee on Insurance and Risk Management Revisions. For the purpose of establishing that certain municipal officers shall be and ex officio members of the City Council's Committee on Insurance and Risk Management, clarifying the number and appointment of certain other committee members, requiring that the Department of Finance provide administrative and the technical support to the committee, requiring that the committee need at least biannually to carry out its functions, and conforming and clarifying related provisions. Sponsored the President on behalf of the Comptroller.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee.
City Council Bill 21-0044, Retirement Board's Composition. For the purpose of conforming the composition of the Board of Trustees for the retirement savings plan and fire and police employees' retirement Board of Trustees, to allow a certain Designee of the Comptroller to act in the Comptroller's place, conforming and correcting related provisions, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored the President on behalf of the Comptroller.
This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee.
City Council Bill 21-0045, Rezoning Blocks 4053, Lot 13, Ward 09, Section 20. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property at Block 4053, Lot 13, Ward 09, and Section 20, as outlined in red on the accompanying flat, from the O.S. zoning district to the R7 zoning district, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored Ramos.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development.
City Council Bill 21-0046, City Property Renaming Eastwood Field to Mays Meadow. For the purpose of changing the name of Eastwood Field, located on the northeast side of Herring Run, within Herring Run Park, adjacent to 3602 Eastwood Drive to Mays Meadow. Sponsored Dorsey.
The gentleman who is the sponsor of this bill, Councilman Dorsey, if you'd like to speak. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill is obvious to property renaming, but Bob and Betty Mays have been great civic volunteers for more than half a century, and it's not very long. And so I'd just like to take a second here to read the recitals of this bill in honor of them and what this is about, so that anybody watching tonight can know and not have to watch the hearing if they don't want to find out just who Bob and Betty Mays are. As longtime city residents of Arcadia, Bob and Betty Mays have devoted over 50 years of community service to Herring Run Park and its nearby communities and institutions. In the 1970s, Bob and Betty were original members of a small group of neighborhood visionaries on Mayor Shaffer's Herring Run Advisory Committee, who organized annual park and stream cleanups and planned park and recreational improvements. Bob and Betty continued volunteering with this group as it eventually morphed into the nonprofit Herring Run Watershed Association, now Blue Water Baltimore. And up until December of 2020, Bob and Betty were active board members for the Friends of Herring Run Parks. Major impacts of their participation include the Herring Run Greenway Trail and the Herring Run Park Master Plan. Through their steady participation in advocacy, promotion, and programming, Bob and Betty's contributions to educating people, young and not so young, on Baltimore's green assets are enormous and unmatched. Whether leading Boy Scouts in tree planting and care, nurturing novices on early morning bird walks in the park, or caring for flower gardens in medians and at park monuments, the couple have set a high bar to which every citizen who cares about their community should aspire. Bob and Betty Mays exemplify civic volunteer service. And so I look forward to a hearing and for the council to move to rename a little slice of Herring Run Park in their honor. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilman. And as we discussed at today's luncheon, this was a bill that the active participants of the community brought to you. And, you know, we always like to do these, but we like to ensure that the community is definitely on board with them as well. So thank you for shedding light on those amazing Baltimoreans.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Madam Clerk, if we could go to the next bill. I'm sorry, this has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. Madam Clerk, if we could go on to this bill.
Resolution 21-0021R, Informational Hearing, Building a Homegrown Public Safety Cadet Program. For the purpose of inviting the Police Commissioner of the Baltimore Police Department, the Fire Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department, and the Director of the Office of Emergency Management, the Sheriff of the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office, the Police Chief of the Baltimore City School Police, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, the Director of the Department of Human Resources, and the Head of the Baltimore City Public School System's Career and Technology Education Program to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss the Baltimore City Fire and Police Department's Explorer Program, Youth Works Program, Cadet Program, College Internship Program, the successes and opportunities with the local recruiting and hiring initiatives, and establishing the best method to create a pipeline of homegrown talent into Baltimore City Public Safety Agencies. Sponsors Burnett, Dorsey, Cohen, McCray, Porter, Bullock, and Middleton.
Councilman Burnett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. So this is an effort to build on the work that we've been doing in the Public Safety Committee to look at the hiring and promotional practices within the Fire Department. And one of the things that came up in those discussions was the need to create a pipeline for young people that look just like us and will be in need of, just like we are someday, to have an entryway into the Fire Department, into the Police Department, which are well-paying careers, public service careers, that are so important and so vital to our communities. And so I'm looking forward to a very productive hearing and probably work sessions to follow to try and build this out in collaboration with the Police Department, Fire Department, and the other agencies mentioned. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilman, for bringing this bill. We had a discussion about this earlier after lunch. But I also think, Councilman, this is a great way of how do we counteract the fact that many of the folks that are employed in those different agencies live outside of the city. It's great to get folks who are connected with these institutions that get to grow up and potentially take on these jobs and these career paths in the future, not just as it relates to the importance of having folks who are culturally connected to our communities, but also hopefully keeping some of that tax base in the city of Baltimore. So again, thank you for this bill. I believe I have a hand raised by Chairman Stokes would like to join, as well as Councilman Glover. I see Councilwoman Odette Ramos. So if we could please note to add Chairman Stokes, Councilman Glover, and Councilwoman Odette Ramos. Madam Clerk, if you could move on to... I'm sorry, and we also have Councilman Torrance would like to be added on as a co-sponsor. Madam Clerk, if you could move on to the next resolution.
Resolution 21-0022R, Assisting Baltimore City Artist. For the purpose of calling on the Administration if the city receives additional COVID-19 relief funds from the United States Congress to invest at least $1 million of those funds to establish an emergency fund to assist Baltimore City artists. Sponsors Dorsey, Burnett, Cohen, Middleton.
Councilman Dorsey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I come from a background in the arts, and so I come firsthand from an understanding of how valuable the arts are to our lives and to our community, to our culture, and to the economy of our city. And I know how hard it is to be a contributor toward that economy. And I certainly know through, you know, the social circles that I've had for my entire adult life and, you know, starting from being a student at the School for the Arts, that it's, that many artists are throughout their lives and careers struggling just to make ends meet while in the pursuit of the production of things that we hold dear, things without which we would not know how to define ourselves. And so I think it's really of the utmost importance that we recognize the degree to which artists have been largely left behind, as typically they are unincorporated, self-employed individuals, ineligible for unemployment benefits when a pandemic strikes. And when so many are struggling, they have really been left behind in the recovery effort to... But this is not to discount the, in any way, the difficulty that so many who are eligible for unemployment have faced with, I would say, the real failure of the state's unemployment system. But I think that that's a completely other subject, but worth mentioning. So, you know, with a resolution of this type where the city council, or, you know, a member in this case, seeks to have us make a declarative statement, often enough it would be something that we would say, "I'd like to move for immediate adoption," assuming that it is something that everybody will be supportive of. In this case, I think it's more meaningful that we should have a hearing on the matter in order for us to really have driven home the, an understanding of how important each individual artist is to our, to our lives and to our economy and reaffirm why we should say that, should money become available, we think that some of it should be made available to individual artists to help, to support them to continue to live and contribute in Baltimore City. So I look forward to hearing on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilmember. Just for the record, knowing that there's a significant amount of resource gap as it relates to different demographics in the art community, I think there's been tons and tons of studies, there's those researches, and we can have, we can highlight glaring examples in our own city. Is equity going to be a factor in the resolution?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, indeed, this resolution specifically highlights the degree to which Black, Indigenous, people of color have been disproportionately impacted in terms of economic hardships and healthcare and other resources that money buys. And that, you know, I believe that any allocation of resources needs to take that equity factor into account and meet everybody as is necessary.
Thank you for your leadership in this issue. This bill has been assigned to the Education Workforce Youth Committee. Just taking a step back to 21-21R, I want to make sure the clerk knows that that is going to be officially assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. On to 21-23R, Madam Clerk.
Resolution 21-0023R, Informational Hearing, 1% for Art Program. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Public Arts Commission, the Baltimore Development Corporation, the Parking Authority, the Planning Department, the Department of Public Work, the Department of Recreation and Parks, and the Department of Transportation, the Mayor's Office, the Department of Finance, and the Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts to discuss the continued administration of the 1% for Art Program. Sponsors Dorsey, Burnett, Cohen, Bullock, and Middleton.
Councilman Dorsey, would you like to have a floor on this resolution?
Thank you, Mr. President, I would. This, the 1% for the Arts Program law in the city is really a fantastic part of what came from the Shaffer administration. It's a, it's a law that says that, that 1% of the city's capital expenditures has to be, so this is for projects like, like bridge construction, building construction, building renovations, all of the things that are approved every single year in the Capital Improvement Plan of the city. They, these capital expenditures have to allocate 1% of them to be dedicated to the creation of public art. And this was a, this program's been around for a long time, so it is known to many, but it had seen little public oversight over the many decades that it has existed. And so it may remain unknown to still many. And like any program, it's only as good as the compliance that comes along with it. In 2007, to further the interest of public art, the Public Art Commission was created. But since then, there has not been any public oversight related to the 1% for the art or the Public Art Commission from any city council. And we know, those of us who've spent time speaking with BOPA, we have seen over the years that there has not always been an ease of compliance in working between BOPA, who administers the funds, and the various agencies who are required to contribute to it. And so we want to make sure that everybody is doing their part to do the best that we can to ensure compliance with this law. Because again, the arts are really important, and if not through this fund, public art, you know, will not exist from, coming from the city of Baltimore. And so I'm looking forward to the hearing on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Madam Clerk, on to the next resolution. I'm sorry, this has also been assigned to Education Workforce Committee. Madam Clerk.
Resolution 21-0024R, Informational Hearing, Baltimore City Tax Sale. For the purpose of inviting the Baltimore City Department of Finance, the Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development, the Comptroller, Baltimore City Information Technology, the Law Department, the Maryland Volunteer Lawyer Service, and other relevant parties to provide information and complete details and timelines and amounts of lien owed, disaggregated, where appropriate, by demographics, ages, owner occupied versus non-owner occupied, and number of residents who have owned their property for more than 25 years in tax sale this year. In addition, discussing the city's powers related to the state, programs already in place to assist homeowners in tax sales, possible reforms, and update on implementation of the NREM process for vacant and abandoned properties, and other relevant information of interest to the Baltimore City Council. Sponsored Ramos, McCray, Porter, Bullock, and Middleton.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I put this resolution in because I think I, and also I think it would be interesting for my colleagues to hear about the entire process of tax sale, some statistics around who we're seeing. And many of you received an email with lists of people who got the final bill and legal notice and asked me a bunch of questions. So I think it's important that we're all understanding what this is. And then despite my colloquially last meeting, I think it's a great idea to have more information and also hear from all of those various parties involved with tax sale. Last session, last council, this council passed a law to address vacant and abandoned properties that are caught up in tax sale, called NREM. So this would actually be an update to that as well. And the idea behind all of this is to start the process of reform. And so I appreciate the time and look forward to the hearing. Thank you.
No, thank you, Councilwoman. This resolution has been assigned to Ways and Means. Taking a step back once again, I'm sorry, 21-23 is going to Ways and Means as well. 21-23R, the resolution about the 1%. On to 21-25.
Resolution 21-0025R, COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Day. For the purpose of declaring the first Monday in March, COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Day. Sponsors Stokes and Middleton.
At this point, is there anyone else that would like to be listed as a co-sponsor? I see Glover, I see Ramos, I see Burnett, I see Cohen, I see Torrance, I see Dorsey. So let me make sure everybody is recognized. So Glover, Odette, Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey, and Torrance. Have everyone. Okay, Mr. Chair, Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection to the rules being suspended, the rules are now suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Yes, so without objection, the rules are now suspended. The floor is yours, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I want to thank my colleagues also for their support. But I just want to say a few words. City Council President Mosby and fellow city council colleagues, as we are approaching the one-year mark of the COVID-19 pandemic, I am submitting this COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Resolution to remember the people we have lost and those who have survived after contracting the coronavirus. I'm asking that we resolve this first Monday of March be known as COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Day as we continue to confront and eradicate COVID-19 as well as address the lingering devastating impacts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you. With the rules being properly suspended, now we'll go to a roll call. Madam Clerk.
President Mosby.
Hi.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Conway.
Aye.
Councilman Schleifer.
Aye.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton. Councilman Torrance.
Aye.
Councilwoman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Porter.
Aye.
Councilman Costello.
Aye.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Aye.
The motion is approved, the resolution has been adopted. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move, I tell you, Mr. Stokes.
Second.
It's been moved, it's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. This motion carries and the calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. First up, we will hear from Chairman Costello, no, I'm sorry, calling on Chairman Costello from Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Thank you for that, Chairman Costello. First up, we'll actually go to Economic and Community Development. I will call on Vice President.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Go ahead, yeah.
I would second Councilman Costello's motion to read short titles for the duration of the meeting.
Okay, perfect. Was that a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Got it. Moving on to Madam Vice President, Sharon Green Middleton, Economic and Community Development.
Are these the committee announcements?
Well, we are on second.
Oh, the Ricky Specter naming of the park?
Yes, ma'am, 21-8.
Yes, that has definitely moved forward. There was, there's some technical amendments to clean up some things, but the bill definitely moved forward out of committee unanimously.
Okay, Madam Vice President, are you, are you willing to, are you able to talk about those amendments?
They were basically just technical amendments. I can yield to the sponsor of the bill if he wanted to add any, anything.
Okay, because I believe we have to, were they adopted in committee, or are there additional amendments that we need to adopt tonight?
I, they were adopted in committee.
Okay. So are you going to move the bill favorably?
I move the bill favorable, sorry.
No problem. Is there a second?
Mr. President, point of order, I believe there needs to be a motion to move the amendments first.
There, the bill was moved as amended.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, we need the clerk to read the bill, and then have the committee chair move the, the committee amendments.
Got you. Madam Chair, if you could read 21-8.
City Council Bill 21-0008, City Property, Naming the Playground in Northwest Park Located at 2027 West Rogers Avenue to the Ricky Specter Playground.
Now, at this point, Madam Vice President, if you could formally move the amendments that were moved in committee?
I move the amendments of the bill. Second.
Since it's been proved, since it's been moved and properly second, all those in favor of approving this committee amendments, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendment is approved. Now, at this point, if we could move the bill.
And I move the bill as amended.
Second.
Okay.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of moving the bill forward, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The motion is approved, the bill moves on to third reader. Before we move on to Public Safety and Government Operations, I believe with us virtually, we have some guests. Madam Vice President, would you like to acknowledge them at this point?
We have, oh, I'm sorry. So we do have on the family of Rochelle Ricky Specter, former councilwoman. I know there were some people, her family was on from, all the way from California, and they are listening and following this bill through. So just would like to, they definitely give their appreciation for the, for the council moving this and making this an historical moment at that park for the longest-serving elected official in the state of Maryland.
Well, thank you, thank you for that, Madam Vice President. Now, at this point, we'll move on to Public Safety and Government Operations. I'd like to recognize Chairman Conway at this point.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first bill is 21-003, Baltimore City Work Group on Nuance Parking, Nuisance Parking in Auto Businesses. This bill came out of committee on February 10th, 2021, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Ryan Dorsey. The committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments, and the amendments were sent to the council members electronically. I move the committee amendments.
Mr. Chair, can we have the clerk read the bill before we move the committee amendments?
Do we have to read the whole bill, was what Chairman Conway did sufficient?
If we could just have the clerk read the short title of the bill, please.
Madam Clerk, do you have the short title of the bill in front of you?
I do not have it in front of me, Mr. President. I can look it up.
One second, guys.
I just sent it to you, Madam Clerk.
I don't have it in front of me.
You should have it in the calendar.
City Council Bill 21-0003, Baltimore City Work Group on Nuisance Parking in Auto Businesses.
Thank you. So this, this committee, excuse me, this bill came out of committee on the 10th and was approved as favorable with amendments. As I mentioned earlier, the amendments were sent to council members electronically. I move the committee amendments.
I think it was moved, and was it already properly seconded? If not, someone please second for me.
Second.
All right, thank you so much. Since it's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor of approving the committee amendments, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are approved. Mr. Chair?
There is also a technical fore amendment that was sent to the council members electronically. This amendment, this amendment simply aligns the lettering with the subsection after, after subsection C. And this happened as a result of doing the original amendments. So with that, I want to move the fore amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do I hear a second? I heard a second. It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving this, please say aye.
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 All those opposed to the technical amendment, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendment is approved. Mr. Chair?
And finally, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second.
The bill has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving this bill as amendment, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The motion is approved, the bill moves to third reader. Madam Clerk, 21-14.
City Council Bill 21-0014, Baltimore City Fire Department, Reporting Requirement.
At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Conway again.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this bill came out of the committee on February 17th, 2021. Its sponsor is Councilmember Chris Burnett. The committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments, and the amendments were sent to council members electronically. I move the committee amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you want to have a second? Okay, thank you. So this bill's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving this committee amendment, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The amendments are approved. Mr. Chair?
And finally, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, I'm moving 21-14 forward. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves on to third reader. We will turn to the bills on third reader for final passage. The clerk will read the bill and call roll. 21-17, Madam Clerk.
21-0017, Study and Report, City Employee Parking Benefits. President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Sorry, I just want, point of order, I wasn't, I didn't hear a call for a roll call vote. We're on third reader, right?
Yeah, we're doing a roll call anyway. It doesn't supersede it. We, we, we want for a roll call, or we could just do it, please don't confuse.
Okay, thank you.
We're doing a roll call, no problem.
I vote yes.
Councilman Conway.
Aye.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Torrance.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Aye.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilman Glover.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, please do a roll call for 21-18.
21-0018, Study and Report, Towing Dispatch Systems. President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Conway.
Aye.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Torrance.
Aye.
Councilwoman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Porter.
Aye.
Councilman Costello.
Aye.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilman Glover.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes.
This bill is approved. Bills to be withdrawn at the request of their sponsor can be found on pages seven and eight of the agenda. Without objection, the bills will be withdrawn. Hearing none objections, the bills are withdrawn. We will move now on to committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear a committee, please proceed with any committee announcements. First up, we're going to have Madam Vice President, Chair of Economic and Community Development, Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have four announcements. I, the first one is Bill Number 21-0013R. I'd like to suspend, move to suspend the rules.
Without objection, the rule's being suspended. The rules are suspended.
Okay, I'm going to suspend rule, do suspension of Rule 10-3 to announce a public hearing for Bill 21-0013R. And that will be heard on March 9th, 2021, at 2:00 p.m. Approval of the exchange of a Class BD7 license to a, to a Class 87 license, 1220 West North The next one, I also need to make a motion to suspend rules.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing none, the rules are suspended.
I'm suspending the rules for, Rule 10-3, to announce a hearing for Bill Number 21-0014R, which will be heard on March 9th, 2021, at 2:00 p.m. And this is also an approval for the exchange of a Class BD7 license to a Class 87 license, and that's 2733 Pennsylvania Avenue. Third one, I moved to suspend the rules.
Without objections, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing no objections, the rules are suspended. Madam Chair?
Thank you. And I'm moving to suspend the rules of 10-3, to announce a hearing for Bill Number 21-0015R, to be held on March 9th, 2021, at 2:00 p.m. And that's for the approval of the exchange of a Class BD7 license to a Class 87 license, and that's 2139 Pennsylvania Avenue. And the next one, I'm going to have a hearing for Bill Number 21-0021, on March 16th, 2021, at 2:00 p.m. And that's late season for past due rent, that's a continued work session from the previous meeting that, that we had. The sponsor, by the way, was Councilman Stokes on that one. And then we're also going to hear on March 16th, Bill Number 21-0022, to be heard at 210. And that's the continuation of the security deposit alternative. And, Mr. Chair, that ends my announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, we're going to hear from Chairman Stokes with Education Workforce and.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Education Youth Workforce will be holding legislative oversight hearing on Thursday, March 4th, 2021, virtually at 10:30 a.m. And that will be with the Baltimore Children's Cabinet 2021 Action Plan. I have one more, and that is Education Workforce and Youth will hold another hearing on Thursday, March 11th, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. Labor and Employment Premium Gig Workers Pay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you. It's fine, it's all good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we want to have Madam Chair from Health, Environment, and Technology, Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. on Resolution 21-0010R informational hearing, Getting on the Same Page, Clarifying Three Woman Services Approach to Resolving Requests. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will also hold a hearing on Wednesday, March 24th of 2021, at 10:00 a.m. on Resolution 21-0016R investigative hearing, Building Backup of Untreated Sewage. Both hearings will be conducted virtually through WebEx. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Next up, we'll hear from Public Safety and Government Operations, Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear Bill Number 21-0033 on Wednesday, March 24th, 2021, at 1:01 p.m. virtually. And this is Mari's LGBTQ Procurement Preference Act. And the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will hear Bill Number 21-0038. And the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will hear Bill Number 21-0038 on Wednesday, March 24th, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. virtually, and this is the Human Trafficking Notice Requirements and Modifications Bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we will hear from Chairman Schleifer on Rules and Legislative Oversight.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Oversight Committee will meet virtually on March 4th at 2:00 p.m. to hear VA 21-0026, the nomination of James Shea to be city solicitor. Also, on March 11th, the committee will meet virtually to consider two bills. At 2:00 p.m., we will hear CC 21-0036, City Code Definitions and Rules and Interpretation. And then at 2:30 p.m., we will hear CC 21-0020, the Baltimore City Commission for Women Ex officio Members. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And then last, but certainly not least, Ways and Means, Chairman Costello.
Chairman Costello?
I don't have any announcements to speak. Thank you.
No new announcements from Ways and Means. We'll move now to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized with regular announcement at this time. Please raise your hand if you have an announcement to make. First up, Chairman Stokes, if you could go on mute. First up, I think, could you raise your hands again? Yes, I'm sorry. I'll go to Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to ask for a moment of silence for Victor P. Doda Jr. Victor Doda was part of the ownership team at the Charles L. Stevens Funeral Home in Locust Point and was about as ingrained in the Locust Point community as one could be for a long time. He passed away unexpectedly on February 13th at the age of 51, or 52, I'm sorry. So I just wanted to ask for a moment of silence, and I did an email whose information is not as present. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Costello. I believe I saw Councilman Bullock seen raised. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I wanted to extend the invitation to all of our constituents for a virtual meeting I'm hosting in partnership with Delegate Tony Bridges in the 41st District on Thursday, the 25th at 5:30. Information is available on my social media page. It's a conversation in Baltimore City Public Schools about changes to the Career and Technology Education Plan. Most of the conversation will focus on the plan for Evans and Westside High School, but their presentation will also include the plan writ large for the city, the entire city of Baltimore. So just wanted to extend that invitation, Mr. President. Thank you.
Really important topic. Thank you for staying on top of it, Councilman Burnett. Councilwoman Odette Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two announcements. First, I want to ask for a moment of silence. Herman Hines, who was the street corner astronomer, he passed away last week. Many of you know him from seeing him in your communities or in Locust Point or Eppner and Charles Village, listening to telescopes, saying, "Have a look on his side where you could see," you know, going, looking through his telescope, you see the moon, see Mars, and he explained what you were seeing. And he was a resident of Waverly. He made Waverly, you know, a great place, and he was also a justice speaker. And so I asked for a moment of silence for Mr. Hines. The second announcement is that I'd like to make sure that the council and the public know about a program that the Department of Finance has, which is called the Future Tax Savings Program, which allows you to pay your taxes ahead of time. And we'll have more information about that that can be spread out so that people know about the program. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Well, thank you. Hearing and seeing no additional announcements, is that right? At this point, I'll turn it over to Madam Vice President. Madam Vice President, you are on mute.
I'm telling you, I'm having some challenges here.
Something's going on with February 22nd, but we're going to get through.
The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, March 8th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. May we have a moment of silence for Herman Hines of Waverly and also Victor Doda Jr. and also for the now 41 families of homicide and the 784 families that have experienced deaths of COVID-19 to date, and also the families that continue to suffer from the opioid epidemic. Please, please continue to get tested and wear your masks and schedule your appointment for your COVID shot. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Madam Vice President. There being no new business, this will conclude the fifth, we're five down, the fifth meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council. We will take a brief moment of silence for the individuals who've lost their lives based off of what Council Vice President Chair Middleton just stated. We're going to take a brief moment of silence, and then this will conclude the fifth meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night, Baltimore.